Praise the heavenly Father. We ask you for help and guidance tonight as we make decisions that may affect the city and may affect others. We hope that you give us the courage and the strength to make the right decision as we move forward, protect all of our workers, our city manager, and all of the key people who keep our city running. These things we ask in the mighty name of Jesus. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams.
Williams here, Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls.
Councilman Balls here.
Your city and state?
Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. Councilmember Bench.
Bench here from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Ostache.
Ostache is present from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present, Michigan.
Councilmember Copeland is excused tonight. And Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Monique Sylvia, Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Flores.
Councilmember Flores, present Saginaw, Michigan.
Mayor Moore.
Present Saginaw, Michigan.
We have eight members present and one excused. You have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any announcements?
Yes, I have one announcement this evening, and I want to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed next Monday, January 18th, for the Martin Luther King Holiday. And with that, Mayor, it moves us to public input.
All of our speakers were speaking tonight. You have three minutes time. Please get all of the necessary information you want in within that three minutes. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker tonight is Chris Mancada. Chris, are you there? Okay, let's go to the second speaker. That would be Raymond De Leon. Raymond, are you here?
Yeah, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna let Mr. Price go first. Is that okay with you, Mayor?
I'm sorry. It was Raymond De Leon that signed up to speak.
Okay, well, can I get Mr. Price with the consent of the mayor? Can I have him start first?
Our public input is one speaker signs up, and it's the one speaker only. So it has to be Raymond De Leon.
Okay, that's fine. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mayor Pro Tem, and also City Manager. We come here tonight for a big reason of the idea of what is happening in Saginaw, what has been happening in Saginaw in the last, what, probably, what, probably, in the year 2020, the idea of all the shootings, all the homicides that we've been having. I would like to, again, I didn't know that, you know, I didn't have a chance to have Mr. Price up, give us all the information that we've been documenting. And again, I'm kind of lost a little bit because he had everything written down. And again, I would like to engage with the idea that I would like to have him speak on this issue if it's okay with the mayor and the city council.
Mr. De Leon, what happens is this, Greg, Mr. Price, I'm sorry, needed to sign up. So whoever signs up, based on our rules as council, they have to do the speaking.
Well, you know what? Because of the idea that we have documented everything, and he was, I thought he was gonna go first, I would like to just close this whole conversation down and get on next month. It just, it just won't make no sense because, again, he had everything documented, everything written down, we were ready to go. I'm very sorry. We did not know that both of us had to sign up.
Madam Clerk?
So that concludes your public input, correct, Raymond?
Correct, ma'am.
All right, thank you. We'll get you signed up. That moves us to the remarks of council.
Clerk Santos, could you please call Chris Mancada again? I think he might have signed in.
Oh, okay. Is Chris Mancada with us? Chris, are you there? Okay, Mayor Moore, that would take us to remarks of council.
And tonight, beginning with Councilman Balls, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot of comments this evening, nothing besides the usual stuff of telling our community to please get involved in, in a young kid's life, to mentor somebody in the city of Saginaw. There's a lot of young kids around the town who don't have mentors. A lot of the issues that we got going on today come from a lot of single-parent homes, and somebody gotta step in and be fathers to these kids to help them grow up and do the right things here in the city of Saginaw. We don't have much to say this evening. Looking forward to the Martin Luther King Holiday coming up. I hope everybody would observe it for what he wanted us to do in America, especially during these trying times right now. We gotta be conscious of what's right and quit believing what's not true. You know, we all got good minds, and we understand what's right and what's wrong. And let's do what's good for all the citizens of the United States. You know, and don't think about yourselves as much. We all in this together. You know, if we fail, we're all gonna fail together. So I would ask for all of us to try to do the right thing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we will have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanna say thank you to, and really give a shout out to our department heads, as well as all of the city departments, for everything that you're doing during these trying times, as well as a big shout out to our constituents and our residents who are stepping up and joining boards and commissions to get the right information. There are a lot of boards and commissions available that have openings, so please contact the Clerk's office and help us do a little bit more in our community so that way they get filled, but also the important information and important subjects and decisions are made for the best of the Saginaw. I do want to just also give another shout out to our community organizations that are stepping up and feeding our community. It is a time right now, Saginaw is a food desert. You'll hear it over and over again. So thank you to everyone who's stepping up to do things, and you guys are the silent heroes, because not everybody gets recognition, but I know you do it for the cause and not applause. And I just want to mirror what Mayor Pro Tem stated, make sure that when we're out here doing stuff, making decisions, and getting information, that you minimize yourself and maximize the good in everything that is going on, because there are people who are doing stuff, there's organizations, our governments, and everybody. We're on the same page, doing the best that we can. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'd first like to start by saying that my thoughts and my heart are with our elected representatives and our public servants and their staff, all of whom had to endure a very traumatic series of events this last week, and just very trying times, as everyone else has said, and there's a lot going on in the world around us that we don't have a lot of control over. But I'm just glad that we are here in Saginaw, and as many challenges we face, Saginaw's a good place to be, and I'm glad that we have the people working in our community to better things, and like Councilwoman Scherzer said, so many people are stepping up and getting involved with our boards and commissions, and just looking to better Saginaw. So one of those groups is our CAC over on Perkins. They will be doing a food drive this January 14th, this Thursday. It's a free food giveaway. You don't need to register. You just drive up, and they put the stuff in your car. It begins at 10:00 a.m. The Health Department is now accepting, I guess, registration forms to reserve your vaccine. If you're 65 and older, you can go to their website, and you can sign your organization up if your organization is one of the qualifying groups or in the group that they're trying to vaccinate now, if you're an employer, and the forms are there for people who are 65 and older as well to get the vaccine, and I think they'll be making appointments from there. I also wanted to mention and thank the city staff for getting it done so quickly, because I asked about it. But we now have the public comments or public speaker signup form available on the I Want to drop-down tab on the New City website, and you can also find links to watch the meetings live there, especially now that we're meeting virtually for the time being, so everybody can stay informed and stay engaged, and sign up to speak to us if they need to. And that's all I have tonight. Everyone be safe and take care of yourselves.
Thank you. Next, we will have Councilwoman Sylvia, Lamar Sylvia.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, other council persons. Just one quick, I've been working with Senator Ken Horn in regards to people in the city of Saginaw being charged extra money at certain stores for their EBT card, their debit card, and we've been working on that. We've come, getting close to an end on that. So I'm not real computer savvy, so hopefully that information, Jeff maybe can post it for me, because we do have phone numbers, the persons that are being charged extra just to use their EBT card, that they will be able to call this particular number that was given to me by Senator Horn. And also, I had a one-on-one meeting with our mayor and our city manager, and I want to say that went very well, and I think we were able to understand some things. So thank you very much. You all have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we'll have Mr. Flores.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor. First, I would like to thank an organization named Empower Saginaw. I had met with them, myself and a couple members of the council, a couple days ago to talk about concerns that they have and that they've heard from the community about making sure that our meetings are more transparent and that they consist of more questions, and I know that that responsibility and onus is upon all of us council members. But there is a concern, at least among that group, that we should continue to have open and public hearings in a way that benefits all citizens. Second, I want to thank Councilmember Williams for engaging with the public and starting to have a conversation about the types of violent crimes that have been on the rise. It is a productive stance that Councilmember Williams took. I commend him. Sometimes, you know, leading people and not telling them what they want to hear is tough, but I really commend your bravery. And then last, I want to thank our city manager, Mr. Morales, for also being incredibly engaged and productive this week when it comes to any issue that we have as council members, especially new council members. Because of COVID, it's been incredibly hard to have onboarding, but Mr. Morales has been essential to us understanding the full scope of our, you know, constituents' needs and responsibilities that we have as council members. So again, I believe that he's doing an amazing job, and especially this week, I really want to thank him for stepping up and leading us during this trying time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Williams.
Good evening, everybody. I want to first say thank you to the speakers that did show up and that weren't able to speak, but I am looking forward to hearing what they have to say next month or the next meeting. I would also like to say, Councilman Flores, thank you very much for your kind words. Our city manager, he and I had had a conversation in regards to hopefully getting something set up to where it can better help educate our community on our city government and how things run. One thing that I would really like to do, and like for all of us to do, is to keep our city educated on how things run, so we don't have that confusion, we don't have rumors floating around out there. It would make things a lot better, a lot smoother, and show that we're all on the same page, trying to get the same things done. So that's all I have for this evening, except for to, I want to say that I think it's important that we continue to pray for our country with the things that are going on, especially with next week looming, the rumors that are going around in regards to all 50 states, state capitals being involved next week, and I hope that's not the case. But it's important that we all stay mindful, prayerful, and watchful during these times. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess it's my turn. I'd like to thank all of the speakers who did speak, Mr. De Leon and Mr. Price. I look forward to your conversation, because you have some good stuff that you want to share with us. So at our next meeting, I'm sure you'll be on to do your public input. Met with one council person, tomorrow meeting with two more, so that we can figure out where we want to go, how we want to do it, along with the city manager and Mayor Pro Tem. It's always nice to hear what everybody wants to do. So the people who have been on council, don't worry, I'm gonna get to you too. I just want to get to the new people first. I had my first meeting with Region 7, and things are looking good. And I really don't have a lot to say, because I've been working on a lot of stuff, and so when I get it halfway together in my head, I'm gonna announce it so that everybody knows what we're working on, or what I'm working on, in terms of doing some stuff different, looking at the city as a whole, and understanding that our city, we want to take it back. We want our city back. And the only way we're gonna take our city back is if we all work together. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Moore, we need to ask Councilmember Ostache for his remarks.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You know what? I'm so used to looking down the table. Bill, you too quiet. I'm sorry. Councilman Ostache, please forgive me.
Thank you, Mayor, and that is fine. Just a couple things. Welcome to the new year, everybody. It's been quite an interesting start, like we've heard. Starz is offering a weekend program. They're offering free rides, Lyft, and express services, so you can schedule your appointments 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. during the week by calling 989-753-9526, so a much-needed service for our citizens in the city, especially during COVID times. Some food distribution centers are doing still some food distribution, so you've got Center Road Church of Christ, St. Paul's Apostolic Church, YMCA of Saginaw, Good Neighbors Mission of Saginaw, Kingdom Life Ministries, Eastside Soup Kitchen, Old Town Christian Outreach Center. Also, calling 211, they have a lot of information there too, and they still have a lot of information for housing, utilities, transportation, personal and household items. I did see something that was posted recently for anybody that is interested in free KN95 masks. So the Michigan Health and Department of Human Services, their locations have them, and also the Great Lakes Bay Health Centers in our area also have the masks as well. So there are 3.5 million masks that were available to the state of Michigan, so if you were looking for one, these are medical-grade masks that they use in the industry, so please get ahold of one of those centers for a mask, if you would like a free mask. So the other thing, too, we've been having the opportunity to attend some of our block grant meetings over the course of the last couple weeks, or last week, actually, and just, again, our staff at City Hall is doing a great time. It's all virtual this year, so thank you to the whole team that is putting that together. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, but once again, I apologize, Councilman Ostache. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, you are now at Reports from the City Manager.
Mr. Man-
Thank you, Mayor, and I do want to thank Councilmember Flores and Councilmember Williams for their comments, and also for contacting me when they do have questions, and all the council members, I think, do a good job about contacting me, and that's appreciated when you do have questions, and we're always trying to get that back to you as soon as we can. Any responses? Councilmember Williams, I did talk to him about educational materials for the public, and we have found items, and we're working on tailoring those to the city of Saginaw that we'll be putting out on our social media and having available at City Hall, which is, of course, reopened now. And I know Mayor Moore will be getting with the MML to see if they have any other materials that we could share with the public, or videos that we'll be able to use for those items. Also, I met, I did meet virtually this week with Bobby De Leon and Greg Price, so I know they were excited to talk to council and tell you what they are planning, but hopefully they can get signed up for our next meeting and can brief you on what they're doing and what they're working on. It is about safety in our neighborhoods, so I think you'll all be interested in that. Senate Bill 690, which is the utility bill assistance, the assistance was applied to accounts last week. There were 2,286 accounts eligible for a total of $590,536. As a reminder, the original assistant projected amounts were reduced by customer payments made through last Monday as part of their program requirements. The assistance only covers arrears from March through October, second, that are still delinquent as of that day. We will send letters to all customers informing them of the payments that were made as a result of the program, and we will also monitor for any additional assistance programs and urge all customers to seek conditional help from 211. This program was time-intensive and required a lot of data from the city, so I want to commend the City Finance Department, and Lori Brown, the Finance Director, and Technical Services Department for pulling all of that information from our systems. And I also would like to thank County Clerk and former Representative Vanessa Guerra, who actually contacted me on, at the year-end, to update me on some of the projects she was working on for the city and the legislature, and I think she did exhibit an excellent commitment to city issues. And when I was in Lansing to testify before the House and Senate Committees, I was very impressed with her knowledge of issues specific to the city of Saginaw, and I thank her for a dedication and representation, and I look forward to working with Representative Amos O'Neill and continuing to work with Senator Horn. And that concludes management update.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the city manager?
Yes.
I would like to know if the city manager could explain to us about the Police Advisory Council, what's going on, and what type of members do we need to join the committee? What's the criteria for the new members that we need to join us so we can get that meeting, that council going? Committee going, sorry.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, and we are in the same situation that we were previously. We do not have enough applicants to be able to have a quorum, and we're still missing applicants, a youth applicant from a local high school, representative from the Mexican-American Council or similar organization, representative from the LGBTQ plus organization, an ex-offender, a mental health professional, and I think those are all of the positions that we currently do not have any applications for at this time. So we're waiting to do the appointments, just because we don't want a terms to start for the individuals who have applied, and we want to, we want to appoint to the committee because we don't want their terms to start unfairly before they can even have a meeting. So we're still waiting for those applications, so if you know people who would fit into those groups or organizations, please, please let them know that they should and can apply and have input into these policy decisions. They do have to be affiliated with those groups or a similar group, and also they have to be a resident of the city of Saginaw.
Can you go, can you just say them one more time so the citizens can hear it, please?
Yes, sir. A youth representative from a local city high school, which means a city resident who is a student at a local high school, and in the area, a representative from the Mexican-American Council or similar organization, a representative from the LGBTQ community, and an ex-offender, which would be someone who has been involved in the criminal justice system, a mental health professional, and I think that's the last one category.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for the manager. So how do you, with an ex-offender, how do you ask them if they're an ex-offender, or are there groups? I didn't know there was groups for ex-offenders, I'm sorry. I mean, you know, real, I don't know. A lot of people don't want to probably say they're ex-offender, I don't know. I just wanted to ask that question. How do you determine that?
Well, I think we'd have to rely on what they put on their application and hope that they're being truthful. I don't know if the clerk or the city attorney want to add anything to that.
I would agree, Manager Morales. We ask them to specify what representation they're applying for on their application. Thank you.
I'm sorry, do we have any more questions for the city manager? You wanted to group, we start, we're trying to start the group, so please, please, please fill out an application.
Mayor Moore, that takes us now to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on City webpage and on SGTV, Channel I need a motion with, if there's any exceptions, to approve the agenda.
Excellent.
Bench move.
Okay, that we accept them. Councilman Balls?
I don't know which one was first.
Doesn't matter.
I heard Bench, and then we'll put Balls as a second.
Okay. Are there any exceptions?
Yes. Four, five, and six.
Okay, there's motions, and we have four, five, and six as exceptions. There's a motion on the floor for one, two, and three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. Our first exception is number four. It's the purchase of Carrion Gable Incorporated, a sole source, for $7,900 for 10 traffic-signal GPS time clocks for the Traffic Maintenance Section Right-Away Division. That was Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes. What I didn't understand, are they, where they're to be placed, and also, the Traffic Maintenance Section, is that an area at City Hall, or what? I just, I didn't know, didn't understand. I just, I didn't know, didn't understand.
So unfortunately, I don't think Phil Carwalk will be able to log in, but I'll answer this the best I can. I don't know that they have the locations. I'm sure they do. But this will give us 20 out of a needed 55 of those timers and what these things help us keep the traffic signals timed, so you're not stopped at every signal, which I think is an issue sometimes. So it'll be good to get these in place. The division that you ask about is located in Public Services. They work out of any of the Public Services buildings that we have. I think right now they probably work out of the building across the street from City Hall.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Ms. Silvers?
Yes.
Okay. You gotta make a motion now. You were the exception.
Mayor, anyone can make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I move for the acceptance of exception number four.
That's that.
It's been moved to second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
I didn't hear, did I hear a no on that motion? Did I hear a no vote?
Yes.
So then we need a roll call vote, Mayor. I'll start the roll call vote then on the motion. Copeland is excused. Lamar Sylvia? Councilmember Flores? Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
And Mayor Holbar?
Yes.
One nay, so motion is carried. I mean, seven yes, one nay, motion is carried, is approved.
Hey, Phil.
Yeah.
Next exception is number five. That is regarding-
All right, but I don't have it on. I'm just listening because I can't do both from my phone.
I'm sorry, someone's microphone is on. I will move forward then with the exception to number five. It's the purchase with MD Solutions for $11,617 for signposts for the Traffic Maintenance Section Right-Away Division, and that was Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes, that would be my same question. City manager is number four. Where would these be? The reason I'm asking is because it's some areas in the city that don't get these upgrades. That's why I was asking where they are. And so to feel comfortable with that, I'm just asking where these particular signs and lights were gonna be. So that would be the same question.
Yeah, actually, I think when Phil Carwalk called me, and I think that took off my mute. But Phil's on my phone, so he's gonna respond to the questions and let me know if you can't hear him. Go ahead, Phil.
Apologies for this, Tim, but councilmembers, though, the signpost is like an annual maintenance amount. Majorities aren't for planned replacements. The signs have a long life. There's a reflectivity measurement that the signs have to meet that we monitor as well. But most of these are for knockdowns and replacements for stop signs, yield signs, no parking signs, street name signs, just various. The city has tens of thousands of signs throughout the city on its 290-plus miles of roads. So I couldn't tell you where they're gonna go. They're gonna go within the right-of-way of the city, but it all depends on signs that get knocked down, and then we have to go replace. So majority of them are for that. We get many of them hit throughout the year, so these are mostly for replacements.
That was very helpful for me. Very helpful for me. Thank you.
Mayor Moore, are you on mute?
Aye. I didn't want to do the feedback. I'm sorry. I need a motion, please.
I move for the acceptance of Consent Agenda item-
Flores, seconds.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Our last exception is item number six, and it's regarding the purchase with Tom Wenzel Buick GMC for $55,046 for a 2020 GMC Sierra Mini Dump Truck equipped as specified for the Streets Division. That was Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Okay, my question regarding that is, the city manager, was there necessary to, was it necessary, excuse me, to have bids for this particular item?
Okay, Bill's still on, so he's gonna answer that for you.
Councilmembers, so what we do as a municipality, and in accordance with meeting all the purchase requirements, is there's several opportunities to purchase. One of them would be a low bid. One of them is what we use quite often, which is called an MI deal or a State of Michigan bid. What happens is annually, the State of Michigan will put out bids for thousands of items that a lot of the local municipalities within the state utilize, and that's to create some efficiencies for bidding. And we're allowed to, I guess, piggyback on those type of bids. There's national procurement bids for all type of items, and it just saves us from having to put the bids together and attempt to get low bids. But what I can tell you historically, in the 20 years that I've been with the city, we've reached out to local auto dealerships and that after we've received a low bid to try to keep, you know, the stuff for ordering local. And, you know, the dealerships have had, they can't even come close to what we can get the stuff purchased at at the MI deal. So it's in the best interest of the city, at least financially, to buy through the MI deal because it's saving us thousands of dollars. Somehow, the people through the state bid, they bid such a high quantity that they're able to get the vehicles and equipment at such a lower price than what the dealerships are. So it's the best price we're gonna get by using the state bid.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any more questions? Need a motion?
I move for the acceptance of Consent Agenda item number six.
Flores, seconds.
It's been moved to second. Hearing no more discussions, let's vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at Boards, Commission, and Committee reports.
Do we have any force of many boards or commissions? I started off earlier. Region Seven, we had our first annual meeting. They are bringing up to actually go into nursing homes and piggyback on some other community outreach with giving the COVID vaccination. They just wrapped up the flu. And so I'm looking forward, and I'm really excited to what is getting ready to happen in our area. The other thing is we have our first meeting for 911 coming up on Thursday. I'm sort of excited about it, too, because we got a new director or interim director until we hire a new director. So I'm excited about that. Anyone else have any boards or commissions to report on?
I got a comment concerning the city council package. To my fellow councilperson Sylvia Lamar, I just wanted to let you know that in the back of the packet, they justify a lot of the questions that you asked. And sometimes, you know, you can get a lot of it out of there before you even ask the question about what they spending the money for. I don't know if you read that in the back, but they do-
Yeah, I make sure I read that, and I did read that, but to me, it didn't answer my question. And I did pose the question to the city manager, but probably late. But yeah, I did read.
Okay, I just wanted to help you out, sister.
Okay, thank you.
I know we can't call the city manager before the city council even asks them about any of these issues, too. Thank you.
Okay. Any more reports? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
We are now at appointment of board and commission members. We do have one this evening, and it's the manager's appointment of Adam Tampa to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st of 2022.
I need a motion approved. It's been moved by Councilwoman Scherzer?
Yes.
Need a second?
Yes.
Second by Mayor Protem? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
We are now at miscellaneous business, and our first item is to consider motion for a closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section H, to consider material, the written opinion of legal counsel exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Motion to accept. Flores?
Flores?
I need a second.
Come on.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls? Councilmember Bench? Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland is excused. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have eight yes votes. Motion is approved.
On December 10th, 2020, the city received a FOIA request from a Daniel Rudd. On December 16th, 2020, the city responded by issuing a deposit request of good faith estimate of the city labor cost for locating and reviewing and reacting the request record. On December 23rd, Mr. Rudd filed an appeal challenging the amount of the city's estimate fee to respond to the request. He also appealed the allegations and denial of his request. I need a motion. I need a motion that issues a written notice to Daniel Rudd affirming that the grant impart and denies in any part of the FOIA request, but reduce the total in good faith pre-estimate associated with the FOIA request to $361.40. I need a motion.
Bench moves.
It's been moved. I get a second.
Second.
It's been second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Once again, is there any other business that we need to cover? Is there any other business we need to cover? Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First motion. Go ahead. Yeah, Flores' motion to adjourn.
Okay, so we got Flores and Silver. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Everybody have a good rest of the-